...of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Ms. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Zwicker?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. To start off this evening, we have a couple of special presentations. First of all, we have our King County Councilmember who represents our district, Reagan Dunn, who's here to give us the state of the county. Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Happy New Year. Thanks for having me up. I sure appreciate the chance to come again this year, as I have for seven previous years, to give the state of the county what's happening in King County. Let me just give you a brief overview of what's happening and then maybe take some questions afterward. We did adopt a $7.6 billion budget this year. It was unanimously approved, unlike prior years, which was good. Seventy-three percent of the budget was for criminal justice purposes. So, as you know, we continue to struggle with that general fund balance with other services, just like I think cities do, as well as other counties. We preserve funding for staffing levels for Superior Court and District Courts, as well as the prosecuting attorney's office. There was going to be ten FTEs cut out. We managed to save those with some other cost savings as well. The budget has, again, protected King County's AAA credit rating, which is very good despite the tough economic times. And we do now have cash reserves, I think, close to appropriate cash reserves in our rainy day fund as well. So, we have slowly worked our way out of the incredible hole we were in about four years ago, where we had to cut something like $250 million off the general fund. The budget is focused on reforming county government, investing in technology to make county government efficient and streamlining our services that we deliver to constituents. I know the city of Renton just adopted your budget, of course, and I congratulate you on your hard work in minimizing the layoffs and preserving your constituent services, which is really where the rubber meets the road. On some other issues, recently, I was able to secure and donate a retired King County Metro van to the Renton Fire Department's Explorer Program, which was kind of fun. The van will serve them well and promote a great program for the local youth interested in serving their communities. It's a great training area, of course. Now, I also, as you know, have an additional van available right now. We're looking to donate to another worthy group, so if any of you are aware of some group that might be worthwhile, these are pretty good surplus vans. We'd be grateful. Mayor Law has sent some recommendations, along with Councilmember Palmer as well, and I appreciate that very much. We are in the midst of a reorganization to fill vacancy created by Bob Ferguson's ascension to the office of the Attorney General. His last day on the council was today, and we had a great going-away ceremony for him as well. This week, the executive will submit three names to the council, and we will choose from those three names who will take that position. That position will hold for not quite a year, and then an election will occur in November for a new four-year term. It's timed out that way, so it worked out pretty well. Some of the things that I'll be doing moving forward, I'm going to be continuing my work along with Councilmember Palmer and others, and serving as chairman of the Regional Transit Committee. We decided that today. And I'll be serving now as chair of the King County Flood Control District. I've served as the chair of the Executive Committee, and now I'm going to chair the whole thing. And I think that's important for Renton, given the amount of flood-able land you have here, not just, of course, from the Cedar River, but near proximity to the green as well. And so, I think that is useful. On another front, metro transit, we're seeing a lot of changes there. I wanted to give you a quick update on what's happening to Rapid Ride F, that line extending all the way to the landing. Metro has been recommended to receive a state regional mobility grant, what we call an RMG, to fund this, which is good. And we will know for sure after the legislature adopts the state budget a little bit later on this spring. So, I'm optimistic. I think everybody agrees it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Mayor Law, and other council members through your leadership on this issue. I think it makes sense to extend it right to the landing. Annexations, always an interesting subject, not just for you, but for us as well. There are a number of possible annexations for the city of Renton. Many of these have been discussed for some time, and we'll continue to work with the city and county moving forward. Some stuff that I've been working on the legislative side, a couple priorities that I've been working on in particular this coming year, an anti-human trafficking measure that I sponsor, launching a public awareness campaign against this form of essentially modern slavery. We estimate that between 300 and 500 young people, mostly women, will be brought into slavery in King County this year alone. That's one year. It's a serious problem, as a former federal prosecutor worked in this area. It's probably the least understood and most under-reported crime going on in King County today, and it is unfortunately happening even here in Renton as well. So, we'll be working on that. Metro bus advertising in combination with Clear Channel, we put 200 buses using this new advertising campaign. It's a reporting hotline, not just for perhaps the victims, but for witnesses, and also to raise public awareness. We want to give this a triage phone number where we can take these individuals and get them off the streets and get them help. So, we're making a lot of progress there. A final piece of legislation that I'll be kicking off soon is the county internship program for veterans. This program is called the HERO Program, Heroes Employment Reintegration Opportunity. It's open to King County veterans, and participants are going to receive an hourly, 30 hours per week, paid internship, and it'll go for six months. We all know that vets, as a group, suffer substantially in the unemployment area. They come from overseas or from their service. They have a tough time reintegrating in terms of working. That's what this program was designed to do, and I think we're making a lot of progress there. So, if the city of Renton is interested in launching a similar campaign, I'm delighted to work with you. We spent a lot of time there putting that program together. It's just an idea for your consideration. So, lots going on. I think the county is in better shape than we were a few years ago. We're still not quite on the stable footing. We hope to be, but I feel like we're making a lot of progress, and we continue to look forward to our very important partnership with the city of Renton. So, I won't take any more time and just ask if there were any questions or comments or thoughts moving forward.
Thank you, Reagan. Now, everyone, remember, we prepped with some real tough questions. It's got some questions for Reagan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a comment, which is that I always look forward to your presentations, and I'm amazed how much information you can give us so succinctly, but you're doing a great job for us. We're really appreciative. Now, it's hard work in your position in the county, but I can tell every time you speak to us that you really understand our concerns in Renton, and so thank you for your work.
Thanks, Council President. Appreciate that very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I just need to find out, has the baby been born, or when's the baby due?
Yeah, I should have mentioned that. Yeah, so my wife went into labor the night of the election, remember, and managed to hold it off a few days. And so, yeah, baby girl, her name is Pemberly Jennifer Dunn. It'll name after my mom. She's about seven and a half pounds, and she's super cute, and we're having a lot of fun. If there're bags under my eyes, it's because there's no sleep at home right now.
Very good. Congratulations.
Got one of each now. We're very happy. Thanks for the call.
Any other questions? Well, as always, Reagan, thank you very much for coming out. We appreciate the relationship, and we do appreciate your responsiveness when we're calling you on local issues, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Law. Thank you, Council.
Good to see you. Okay, next, we have a very special presentation from Fire and Emergency Services with Employee and Citizen Recognition, Chief Peterson.
Good evening, members of the council. Mark Peterson, Fire Chief, Emergency Services Administrator. It's my pleasure to come before you tonight to honor one of our citizens for action above and beyond. So, can I get Mr. Hargie to step forward, please? So, Mr. Hargie's before you tonight. Back in October, at 3:00 on October 11th, Renton Fire units, along with King County medics, were dispatched to a serious injury accident. Car hit a pole and caught fire. Mr. Hargie rolled up along the scene and started seeing what was happening, saw that the driver was pinned in the car, and grabbed a fire extinguisher from his work truck and put the fire out. Now, when our crews got there, they said that this saved the man's life. The person was pinned in the car in such a way that you couldn't just pull him out. You had to, we had to use extrication tools and everything else. And that's not easy, when you're, especially if you're not trained to use a fire extinguisher in a situation like that. A lot of things are going through your mind, and a lot of things are, can I make a difference? And Mr. Hargie had the presence of mind to grab that fire extinguisher and put the fire out and thus save a life that night. So, I'd like to take a few minutes and recognize him, and we'll get a picture for you in front of the council. So, right here, I got a certificate. Thank you very much for taking that time that evening and making a difference and giving a voice. Thank you very much.
With permission of the council, I'd like to have our picture taken with the council.
Sure. Oh, I love this part.
I used to stand up here.
Stand up, yeah. Family members would like to take a picture, please? You're more than welcome.
We'll get you the pictures.
I've got them together.
Okay.
Wonderful. It's also an honor to recognize one of our employees, and especially when it comes time for promotions. Going through the promotional process in either law enforcement or fire is not an easy, easy task. There's a lot of hours spent studying, and there's a lot of hours preparing. You get into the assessment center process, and there's a lot of second guessing of yourself. Sometimes you do really well, and other times, you know, you can get disappointed. But there's one member of our organization that's persevered every time he's taken the promotional process. And the one thing I think that gets lost in the whole promotional process is the fact the family is kind of put on the back burner for a while, and they go through a lot. I mean, when it comes time to study, that's where your focus is, on study, and sometimes the family is, you're at home studying while they're off doing their thing, or, now, so there's a little bit of sacrifice on the family's part, too, so we need to recognize that. But Lieutenant Jeff Plant was promoted to lieutenant on July 1st of 2012. He's currently assigned to Fire Station 12 on A Ship, located in the Highlands, and he was hired by King County Fire District 25 on April 28th, 1992, and became a Renton firefighter on April 1st of 1993. During his career, Lieutenant Plant has been assigned to all the stations within the organization, and he has served as a technician in all special operations, dive, rope, and hazmat. Jeff has been married to his wonderful wife, Kelly, for 18 years. He has two beautiful daughters, Natalie, 14. Natalie? There's Natalie. And Morgan, youngest daughter, 11. Jeff and his family live in Buckley. In his time off, he loves playing golf and supporting his daughters in select fast-pitch softball, which takes them all over the country.
with the city of Renton.
We're proud to have Lieutenant Plant as an officer with the Renton Fire and Emergency
I'd like to share my family with you, my wife, Kelly, as Chief Peterson stated earlier,
Services. He exemplifies the type of leader we strive to promote, and I know last week during the
my daughter, Morgan, my daughter, Natalie, and then right in front is my mother, Carol
administrative retreat, we were talking about employees going to that second level and
Plant, who has lived here in the Renton-Newcastle area since, well, 40 years since I was born.
really serving the city's needs and really doing what it takes to get the job done.
And my grandmother, Jackie Martin, who now lives in the city of Renton at Merrill Gardens,
And Jeff is a model employee when it comes to doing that.
so we close our eye on her.
He'll go up and above and beyond in making sure that our customers and our citizens
Fantastic. And last but not least, kind of my fourth father, Sam McDaniel here, who has been a
are well-served. So, Jeff, could you come forward, please?
longtime friend, and all three of my other brothers couldn't be here, so.
And Morgan? Again, with council's permission, I'd like to have Jeff's picture taken with the Morgan has a distinct honor of pinning the badge on her father, and again, when it comes to law enforcement and firefighting and the like, that's a true honor to have someone council in the background. pin the badge on you. One more right here. So, Morgan, I'm going to give you the badge, and there you go. One more right here. One more right here. You can stick. One more right here. Absolutely. One more right here. 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 Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one item. As the council and the community knows, we've had a bout of some pretty cold weather over the last several days, dipping down below freezing, below 20s in some instances. For those members of our community who are not fortunate enough to have shelter, this can be particularly brutal evenings. And so, we did open our severe weather shelter over the weekend and had a number of people take advantage of that. I know on Saturday night, we had about 18 people there overnight. Enough cold weather is continuing. We've decided to continue the shelter through Wednesday night. So, let me just, for the benefit of the audience who might know of someone, we'll continue to operate this. It's open at the Renton Harambe Center. It'll open nightly at 8:30 PM, and we then close it down at 7:00 AM each morning. Separate sleeping areas are prepared for men, women, and then for families with children. Registration is required at the door, and as with all shelters, rules for the health and safety of clients, staff, and the broad community will apply. The severe weather shelter will be operated by Catholic Community Services and volunteers. For more information, people can contact our Human Services Office at 425-430-6600. And to access information regarding shelters in Auburn, Federal Way, Bellevue, and Seattle, they can contact the Crisis Clinic by dialing 211. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thanks, Mr. Covington. Next is audience comment. We have one person signed up to address the council. Please come to the podium, give your name, city of the residence, excuse me, city of your residence, and we have five minutes. Audrey? I didn't have to tell you that. You know the drill.
I'm a very happy citizen of Renton. Audrey Adams, for the record, and I hope you all had a wonderful holiday. Anyway, my work isn't done yet, because, well, for many reasons, but this weekend, I met yet another Renton resident that's forced to buy expensive filtered water to avoid the fluoridation chemicals. She just moved here, and I met her at the Isaguá Bulk Water Dispenser at PCC Market that takes all the fluoride out, and so, of course, I have to ask questions. And she says that the reason she goes way out of her way to get water is because she gets stomachaches, first of all. Secondly, she gets headaches. And third, she said, and I quote, "If I drink fluoridated water, I just can't think straight." So, that's my kickoff, because this woman is not alone. In fact, researchers find impaired cognitive function from fluoride, and it's not just babies whose brains are harmed by fluoride, it's also those in their prime and those of us rather mature individuals. In fact, the 2006 National Research Council report discussed the fluoride's neurobehavioral effects on our cognitive function on page 208 of that report, and I've, I'll be sending this via electronic and also leave you a hard copy, Mr. Covington. So, it remains an issue for all of us. And the sort of action with this new Renton resident reminded me that there was something else I wanted to do, and that is, need to make some requests of you. We all need to know the exact contents of the product that we're adding to the water. I mean, it's not just that I want it. I think we all need to know exactly what's in it, and you may not know that when testing is done and the certificate analysis, that's done after dilution, but kind of like when you're putting, if somebody were to dump oil down the, you know, the sewer drain, it counts just as much, the full product does, just because it's now diluted with the water from the storm runoff does not make, they still need to know what's going in that storm drain, and it's toxic. So, I had asked for some information last June, which very nicely supplied to me under public information request. Your staff has been lovely, by the way. And the certificate of analysis that's provided to Renton by Waco Chemical Mineral Corp just isn't enough information to ensure that Renton is getting exactly what we think we're getting. And I know you'd want to know this, too, because historically, Waco did not reliably provide timely nor even consistently dated COAs. That being because when I got it, it wasn't dated, and the one that was dated was dated about four months prior, and it should be one COA for each delivery that comes in. Anyway, and the chemical analysis, as I said before, is done after diluting it in water, and if there's any arsenic or lead or anything in there, we want to know that the raw product, we want to know what's in there, and that's not what the COA is telling you. Also, Waco lacks the incentive to provide a full contaminant disclosure of the product that they're selling you. And if Waco is selling chemicals that are something more than just sodium and fluoride, then the Renton residents have a right to know what those contaminants are and how much they are. So, I'm asking as a public information request that you independently test a sample of that sodium fluoride that you have that's being added to the water currently and have that sample evaluated by, before dilution, by a lab that has absolutely no possible conflict of interest. In other words, there's no financial incentive for them to give you one answer versus another. Also, I'd like the most recent COA from the most recent shipment, just so that I keep updated, and the most recent material safety data sheet, the one I have that I got from you is dated November 2003, and that might be the most recent, but if there is one more recent, I would like that. Also, I kind of have a hard time copying that one off. And also, I would really like to have an empty sodium fluoride bag, so I can see what the warnings, et cetera, are on that bag, if I may, and I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. We have seven items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two reports from the committee of the whole that I'd like to present.
Committee of the Whole Committee Report, Reach Center of Hope Day Shelter. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding and the lease agreement with the Renton Accu-Medical Association of Churches, Reach, for the Center of Hope Day Shelter for a period of three years, located in Wing A of the former City of Renton Jail, Level P2 of the current City Hall Building, 1055 South Grady Way. This is signed by the council president.
I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the Committee of the Whole Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee of the Whole Committee Report, Waste Management Strike Settlement. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to use settlement funds received from Waste Management to provide a one-time direct credit of $10 to each residential customer and $50 to each multifamily and commercial customer as mitigation for the inconvenience caused by the lack of collection during the temporary disruption in garbage, recycling, and yard food waste collection caused by labor strike occurred from July 25th, 2012, to August 2nd, 2012. In announcing the credit, the administration shall also inform its residents of the various programs and recycling opportunities available to them. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move that council concur in the committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that council concur with the committee report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's all the unfinished business I have, Ms. Breyer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palmer.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business.
Ms. Breyer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Zwicker?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions, we have one resolution.
This resolution regards the Cedar River Gravel Removal Project Interlocal Agreement, a resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County regarding the Cedar River Gravel Removal Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Corman, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corman.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, my first announcement is just a reminder that next week is a city holiday, and therefore, there's no council meeting on Monday. Next Monday is a holiday, to be clear. And then, I would like to announce that on January 28th, there will be a Committee of the Whole meeting, and that will be at 6:00 PM in the council chambers, and there are And then I would like to announce that on January 28th, there will be a Committee of the Whole meeting, and there, that will be at 6 o'clock PM in the council chambers, and there are two items on the agenda. The first is comprehensive plan update, which is a briefing only. Second item is sunset area community investment strategy, and that's also a briefing only, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Transportation Aviation Committee will meet this Thursday, January 24th, at 4:00 PM in the council conference room, and just one item on the agenda, emerging issues in transportation.
That'll be next Thursday, right?
Next Thursday, the 24th, right, thank you.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee will meet on 5:30 in the council conference room on January 28th, Monday. Two topics, pipeline safety update, as a briefing only, and emerging issues in law enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee for January 28th is canceled.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee will meet on Monday, January 28th, at 4:30 in the council conference room. We have three items, vouchers, emerging issues in revenue streams, and enterprise asset management, and the Intergov Building Permit Systems Update. That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Zlicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple items. First, I wanted to alert council that today, council member Prince and I, at the invitation of the Renton School Board, met with the consultant that'll be doing the superintendent search to kind of offer some of our perspectives and what we would like to see them, and they're developing their outreach and questionnaires and that type of thing, and I think the big thing, we also had Rich Crespo from Newcastle there, and I think all three of us pretty much hit on and explained to the firm, who was already hearing it, the importance of the partnerships and the five-legged stool, and I kind of reiterated the new working relationship that we had with the inclusive playground, and that that type of stuff would be very important in a new superintendent. And then I'd like to go ahead and announce the Planning and Development Committee meeting for Thursday, January 24th, beginning at 3:00 PM in the council conference room, where we'll hear two items, first being Kirkland Town Home's fee waiver request, and the second item, comprehensive plan update work program briefing. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee meeting for January 28th will be canceled, and I also wanted to announce a wonderful event that I had the privilege and pleasure of attending yesterday, was the sixth annual, actually, a couple of events, same group of individuals, organization, the Sixth Annual Washington State Korean-American Day Celebration. And we began the celebration at the Korean War Veterans Memorial Services at the Capitol, the state Capitol building, yesterday morning at 11:00. And then yesterday afternoon, starting at 3:00 PM, they held their Korean-American Day Celebration Ceremony, and it was quite an event. It, I was able to stay there through most of the program that went on beyond 6:00 PM, but it highlighted the cultural and economic achievements made by our Washington State Korean-Americans. We have approximately 140,000 of people of Korean descent residing in the state of Washington, and it's always delightful to hear Senator Paul Shin speak of his humble beginnings. He speaks about how at the age of a teenager in Korea during the Korean War, how he was without a mother who had passed away, his father had abandoned him, and he was crying, and one of the Korean soldiers saw him and reached out to him and ultimately adopted him. And now Senator Paul Shin is not only a proud American, but he's one of our legislative leaders also, so it's very heartwarming to hear his story, very proud to be an American, and of course, the Korean community have made some extraordinary contributions to the United States and our state, so it was a pleasure being a part of that organization, a part of that event, and that is all.
Great, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next is audience comment, was there anybody who would like to address the council? It's a wish of the council.
It will be adjourned.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we adjourn. I suppose everyone's going for cake, huh?
Oh, yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned.